Okay. Well. We'll go ahead and start the meeting, I think, or should we wait? What's your sense on that? Is he prepared to join shortly?
Go ahead and begin. Yep, go ahead and begin.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. Welcome everyone to the February Radio Board Meeting, the City of Ocean Shores. Thank you for attending. I'm hoping that we'll have all of our applicants present on this call. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order, and I'd like a roll call. Daryl, are you present? Daryl's present, okay. And Rosanna, are you are available?
I'm here. Hi.
Thank you. And I'm Marty Hadfield, Chair of the Radio Board. Welcome. We want to move into the approval of the meeting minutes, or agenda, rather, and Daryl, do you have any adjustments? I have a few that I'm going to like to propose, but would you care to start out with anything? Oops, you're muted. Okay, I believe you're saying that you do not have anything at this moment. Rosanna, would you? Very good. Thank you.
No, no adjustments. Sorry.
Okay, Rosanna?
No adjustments.
Okay, well, I'd like to hear a motion to amend the agenda to modify item five to reflect that, and I hope this is correct, that City Clerk Sarah Logan will be the presenter for the financials. Sarah, is that good with you? Okay, she's acknowledged that correctly, I believe, and affirmatively. Daryl, could I hear a motion?
Sure, I move to adjust the meeting agenda as noted.
Thank you. And Rosanna? Thank you. Any discussion about it? Pretty self-evident. So I believe, I don't know if we have to actually vote on that, but we shall. So Daryl and Rosanna?
Yes.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Thank you. And I do too. I hear three. So eyes, we make that adjustment. And then I have a further adjustment that I would like to make to hear a motion for. And that is to amend item eight. I was going to originally, well, we can go into a discussion, but I want to insert after the term applicant's interview, a line that says that the vote will follow at the next Radio Board Meeting. And I would like to propose that, or hear a motion to propose that to be next Tuesday, February 1st at 10:30 a.m., so that we can get our vote over with on this matter of the board member fill out. So let's go ahead and see if I can hear a motion for that in a second, hopefully, and then we'll enter in a brief discussion.
Rosanna here, I make a motion to amend item eight to insert a line to vote for the following next board meeting, February 1st.
I'll second that.
Okay, and second?
Yes, I will.
Uh oh. Thank you, Daryl. Okay, as to a discussion, I'd like to make a comment that the reason for that is I was, it all falls on my shoulders. I should have double-checked the Radio Board bylaws over the weekend, but I had originally wanted to insert a, an executive session there today. However, our Article Four under Meetings, item C, or paragraph C, states that the executive sessions of the Radio Board may be held only with prior City Council approval, and in accordance with the requirements imposed by the RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 and 42 dot 30 dot 140. So absent approval, prior approval of the City Council, we cannot have an executive meeting today. That generates this desire to move forward with the matter, but we won't be able to be on today's timeframe. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. We can go on to a vote on this matter. Rosanna?
I make a motion to, are we postponing the executive decision, the session?
Well, we'll just hold a regular, we can hold meetings anytime with at least 48 hours notice, I believe, is what's prescribed in the rules. So this will just be a mid-cycle meeting with a focus on the vote.
I make a motion to have a mid-cycle meeting today, the focus on the vote. Sorry, I'm a little confused.
So the proposal or motion that he's requesting is to have a special meeting on February 1st to vote on the new board member.
Okay, so I make a motion to have a special meeting for, on February 1st, to vote for a new board member.
Second.
Okay, and just for clarification, I don't know if it's a special meeting, but it is a regular meeting, the way the descriptions are. No? It is a special.
It's a special meeting because it's not on the designated Tuesday at 10:30 of the month. So it's considered a special meeting.
Okay, okay, I guess I didn't fully appreciate the description of the radio meeting dates and times. Okay, so, thank you. Will we vote on that then? And Daryl, would you position your vote, please?
I, I agree.
Okay, Rosanna?
I agree.
Okay, and I do too. So thank you. So we will have that next week. We'll today we'll have the presentations from the applicants and then have a vote next Tuesday. Thank you. All right. Minutes, I
We need to approve the meeting agenda as amended.
Oh, okay, thank you. Seeking approval of the meeting agenda as amended.
I moved.
Could I hear a motion?
Yeah, I moved that we
Yes, I can make. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. And Rosanna, seconded? Okay, no further discussion? Not hearing any. Let's vote. I vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor. Thank you. Okay. And okay, time for approval of minutes. I did not see minutes attached to the last meeting because we did, were unable to hold the previous meeting.
There are no minutes to approve at this time.
I'm sorry, say again?
There is no minutes to approve at this time.
Okay. Since there are no minutes to approve at this time, we will move on to the next item, which is public communications. Do we have any?
I did not receive any written public communication. I do see that there is public online. Don Williams, do you have a public comment?
Hello?
Yep.
Do you have a public comment, Don?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm a long ways away, and I rely on City Council meetings. Either KOSW streaming or the city's streaming as a Zoom meeting. I've never been able to get AV capture to work on any council meeting, but I only have an iPad to do it on. It does not work on an iPad at all. I'm too busy, and I can't try it on my computer. I'm too busy scrambling to get a usable signal. The council meeting on the 10th, the I think KOSW had to stream, had to pick up the Zoom meeting from the City Council, because both of those, the audio was totally, absolutely useless. And even on the radio, I understand, the people I've talked to, the council meeting on the 10th was absolutely useless, and there was a very loud 60-cycle hum on both the city's Zoom and on the broadcast by the radio station, which I think they were just listening. I think they had trouble with their own connection, and on the 10th, they were, they were listening, they were broadcasting the city Zoom meeting. Going on the last night, the city again was totally unusable on Zoom. I mean, absolutely, it was unusable totally. I had to get rid of it, and I switched over to KOSW streaming, and theirs was, was pretty good. It was much, much better, but it only had a left channel, did not have two channels, only had a left channel. And I had to, I watched the Zoom meeting on the screen, and I listened to the streaming on KOSW. And so something was done differently at last night's meeting, because the audio on KOSW was pretty much usable, but it was only the left channel. But I'm telling you, the city's Zoom meeting is absolutely terrible. And I believe what's going over the air on council nights on the radio, on the FM channel, is also essentially unusable. Now, I do notice that sometimes when I listen to the recordings, they're better. But the live broadcast, like I said, on Zoom has always been terrible. I can't get AV capture to work on my iPad. And, and last night, I had to rely on the left channel only, which was, which was just fine. I appreciate that. I'd like to know what you did differently last night, because it was, it was, the audio, the audio on left channel only was very clear. But again, the city Zoom was useless. So those are my comments. I hope you can get something done to fix it. It's the acoustics. I don't know how you're picking up the acoustics on the Zoom meeting. If it's coming off the, off the boom microphone on the camera, it's not working. So like I said, whatever KOSW did last night is just, is, was pretty good, only the left channel, though. And I thank you very much. I really depend upon these streamings. I'm always jumping, trying to figure out which one's going to work tonight. And last night, it was video on Zoom and streaming on KOSW. Okay, thanks a lot.
Hey, Don, I have a question. What, what is AV capture? What is that?
That's the city's, that's the city's broadcasting system. It's where all the AV, let let the clerk explain it to you, but basically, it's where all the, the city videos are kept, where you can go back and look at the archives, and it runs live, a live stream. Totally different than Zoom, I think, but it runs a live stream during the meetings. And that's the one, I have never been able to get that on my iPad. Like I said, I've never tried it. I don't try it on my computer, because I'm too busy scrambling to try to find something that works. So I, I'm, like I did say, I was able to get that one, but AV capture, I've never been able to get it to work. So that's it. Maybe the clerk can explain. Sarah, can you explain that? Thank you.
Would the board like me to explain?
Sure, and then I can provide a little bit of
Yeah, so AV capture, like Mr. Williams said, is our our archiving system for our video recordings. We pick up the video feed from North Beach Community TV and record it in that manner. The live stream is put out over the internet, and it's interesting that Mr. Williams isn't able to get it on his iPad, because I actually track it and stream it on an iPad at my desk. So I'm getting it through the iPad. Again, we go back to January 10th, which I've explained in detail, where our Zoom capabilities were not up to par due to settings, and then the live stream is what KOSW has been pulling the, the, the sound off of. And at that meeting specifically, the software hadn't been updated. And so therefore, it, when Trey tried to pull the live stream, it went to a new channel, and once he got to the new channel, it got better. But at this time, and especially last night, we had presentations and, and everything, and it worked, and the live stream was working, the closed captioning was working. And KOSW, the difference between January 10th and January 24th is KOSW was actually at the convention center, whereas on January 10th, they were at the station, and the streaming capability was fractured, which we've discussed in detail.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay, I just want to point out again that the Zoom meeting is, is where the audio was just terrible. And on both the meetings, there was no improvement last night from the 10th. And like I said, I dumped it and listened to KOSW. And it was just fine. It was left channel only. So, okay, those are my comments. I don't think the Zoom, the Zoom feed is working at all on the audio. And it may be because you're picking up the audio off the boom microphone on the camera. If you are, that does not work. Whatever KOSW did last night works fine. Thank you.
So what I did, I was present and ran the facility and at the convention center, and I've inserted an isolation transformer in the audio feed from the convention center's mixer to a direct feed that is streamed to the radio station. That isolation transformer eliminated the hum. And so that was my goal at the time. Unfortunately, the little mixer box that we were using last night, there is either a, maybe it needs a software update now, who knows, but I was having serious challenges with even maintaining that left channel. But thank you for your acknowledgement that it did come through clearly. I also have ordered a filter, the same type of filter, but for use by the TV, North Beach TV feed people, just as an experiment, so that they can see if, if theirs will likewise be cleaned up to eliminate the hum. There are just a couple of other steps that we're looking at for improving the audio overall from the radio station standpoint. And I know the TV folks are probably, you know, working towards the same goal at their end, but I, I continue to be embarrassed by the overall challenges that we continue to have, but we do have a couple of solutions down the road that will become more easily obtainable, once the city, or once the convention center has their audio system improved, which is in process. They're actually working on it now. The former room that the City Council met in had better acoustics, so there were lower reflections to cause that echoing that causes cancellation and distortion. Unfortunately, in the large room, to meet the COVID isolation for the number of citizens that want to be present, it needs to be in that larger room. That's my understanding. So there are a whole set of circumstances that have changed in the last two years that unfortunately are somewhat out of our control. But those that are within control, we're working diligently to get a handle on. So I hope that helps, and thank you. I appreciate that you're present here and also for your comments, Don. It's, it's important that everybody know we're working on it.
Okay, well, thanks a lot. I just wonder why, why the, why the Zoom meeting can't run on the same audio stream that KOSW runs on, because you were working last night on the left channel, and the, like I said, the Zoom meeting was essentially unusable on audio.
Hey, Don, also, there's like a 16-inch, 16-second gap between what the Zoom's, what the TV's doing and what we're broadcasting. If you try to do it simulcasting, you look at, if you're listening to KOSW and watching the Zoom, you will notice that we were about 16 seconds ahead of what the TV station was.
That's just processing.
Well, I can live with that.
Internet. Video compression.
Like I said, last night, I thought the, the lead time was a lot less, but, you know, it's fine with me. I can watch it on one Zoom and listen on the station, but you know, I have to scramble to find an audio that actually is usable. So any, I really appreciate whatever you did last night. And I just, like I said, why can't the Zoom meeting tie off whatever audio feed the stations you used last night?
Well, we may be able to. We're, again, we're endeavoring to make it the cleanest possible. So thank you. Okay. I don't believe there are anybody, any additional citizen public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the chair's report. Just a brief update. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Sarah.
Marty, would you guys indulge us? The mayor has another meeting to be on, and he wanted to reference a couple key points when it came to the handbook. Would you guys allow him to do that? Just, just give you his thoughts, and then that way he can get to his next meeting.
I understand. I have no problems. Rosanna, are you clear for that?
Yep.
Okay, great, Daryl?
Yeah, it's good. Good idea.
Thank you. Please proceed, Mayor. Thank you for presence.
Well, first of all, I appreciate everything that you guys do. I know that back when I first started on council, one of the, my first assignments was being the radio liaison. So I have a deep understanding of every challenge that you have, and, and I really appreciate what Marty's done, and I know he's going to be talking about it later, about applying for more wattage, so that you're going to be reaching more people out there. But with that, and Marty and I had a short conversation about the relationship of the radio station and the city, and, and, and with the most recent thing where the radio station has come back underneath the the city, that one of the concerns I have, and I know that you're working through it, is that you're going to be reaching much more people than you are doing right now. And with that, you're going to have a bigger audience that are probably going to have more issues with whatever may be broadcast over. And so my concern, my concern is that as you move forward on your, whatever the policy is, that we think about if we're serving a larger audience and how that's going to be. And one of the, one of the concerns I have, as I was listening to the radio station, again, and again, I'm not trying to say for you to do anything, but you have a disclaimer on what people say on the radio, which I just have a concern on that there's some type of, I guess, vetting, as you have, have programs that are put on, on there that making sure that the city is not being held liable for something that may be broadcast. And, and I know that you're working through, through it, but just as you grow listeners, becomes a higher probability that people are going to be calling the, the city and having issues, whatever. So I just, I would just like to, as you look forward, look forward on what it looks like of a station that's covering the area that you're going to be covering if you're approved with the new license. So that's pretty much all I have to, to add. And again, I'm very supportive of Marty's creative approach of looking at how do you get more frequency, because I would have never thought that. So, so very nice job for everything you guys are doing.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, I want to just reiterate that we have an absolute open door with the city, and you know, we are just an advisory board to the city, of course. So if there's any form of formatting or content concern, the earlier we know about it, the better. We'll, we'll take every effort to, you know, set the stage and set the tone throughout our broadcast days to hopefully please all of the listening public along the North Beach. And but if there's anything in particular, or some avenue that it just doesn't feel right, will absolutely be 100% responsive to the wishes of the city.
Yeah, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to censor, I'm not trying to set you guys' mission there, but I would just, just looking at some of the lawsuits that have, have hit the larger networks. I just don't want us as a city to be involved. So if, if there's, if there's protocols or whatever, because you guys are in the business, that could just keep us out of trouble, I'd appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. We've added the, the kill button in the studio, so that will, the DJ in a live interview has the ability to hit, hit the delay button and take it off the air. So
Profanity delay.
Yeah. Okay.
Great.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before you go, I wanted to let you know, all you guys, City Council, all of them have an open invitation to come on the radio.
And I've actually signed up, so I'm going to be on the radio, I think, next Monday.
Wonderful. That's great. Well, we encourage all members.
Okay.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Good luck with your next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, well, let's move on to Chair's report. As Mayor Martin kind of touched, you know, we have an application, if anybody online is not aware of it. We've filed an application to increase the radio station's power originally from 100 watts, which is what we currently have, up to 1,000 watts. And the outcome of that application in its processing at the FCC, ran into a logjam of other applicants for the same frequency or the adjacent frequencies that would impact our application. And some of those surrounding communities are, I think there is at least one, maybe two applicants in Aberdeen, one in Hoquim, one in Central Park. And those applicants have filed for facilities that would be in direct conflict of ours. So what the FCC does is they have a merit system, and they look at various aspects of the pre-existing licenses, the activities of the applicants, and the coverage, among other things. So we were stuck, because we're, our facility was not covering a lot of people relative to some of these other ones, because they were much closer to Aberdeen and/or in Aberdeen and/or Hoquim. And so I, there's an opportunity, about a two-month window from the time that we filed until the time that the commission starts to process these applications, and it's an opportunity for all of the applicants to get together and figure out how they can carve the pie up and make it work. But there are several in this pileup of applications that are just completely mutually exclusive. So we're fortunate being on the coast, because I was able to find a tower site that would allow us to be removed from the cluster of stations that are in this mutually exclusive situation, and permit us to be considered by the FCC as a separate application, not to be in any form competed with by other applicants. And it's a first-come, first-served application basis. So we were fortunate, as far as we can tell at this date, that we were the first ones to get in a modification of our application that will remove us from the logjam and allow the FCC to process us separately and more directly than having to go through the sorting process that they are with the other folks. So the, one of the aspects of this change is that we're going from the existing 100 watts, and then our application that we initially filed for 1,000 watts. And now we have an application in for a maximum Class A facility, which is 6,000 watts. So our original population coverage that we presently have is about 5,700 persons. With the application going up to 1,000 watts, we were going to cover about 6,800 persons. And now with this new application, we cover between 13 and 20,000 persons. So we're very excited about this from both the safety standpoint and availability of emergency information to the general public that will be able to serve for the first time. Not only for ourselves, but we will be providing second service. So there's only one other not only for ourselves, but we will be providing second service. So there's only one other non-commercial station that will be covering a large portion of the Quinault, uh, tribal areas. So we will be the second voice in that area, but the first local voice that is in that area. So, um, we're, we have a lot of, uh, wonderful things going in our way and, um, we just want to, uh, continue on with the, uh, uh, momentum that we've garnered so far. So that's pretty much it for my, uh, uh, quick Chair's report. Anybody have a quick question on the board? Great. Hearing none. Let's move on to the station report. Butch.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
You hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Um, I got unstable internet here. So if I waver in and out, it's not my fault. Uh, reports. I'm not sure. We got two, one new DJ coming onboard, one old DJ coming, not old in age, but well, maybe, but past DJ coming back on. Uh, and I'm not sure, Dave, did we introduce you last, at the last meeting?
Oh yeah, I've been on a few meetings now, Butch.
Okay. So you're not new anymore, all right? So the, we got Mike Price, which I see is not on the meeting this morning and Rick Breveridge, Breveridge. Uh, that'll probably be the last of the new DJs that we're gonna be having on until we know what we're gonna be doing in the future. This new licensing that we're going for, a lot of things are gonna change and we're not quite sure what to do until this all happens and we figure out the programming and everything that we're gonna be doing. We'll still be accepting applications, but we're gonna be putting them on hold until we figure out what we're doing. Or if they want to do in the marketing or news or something like that, that's not on the air, which we have, we have, uh, we have a job for them, all right? Also, we'll be talking, I see that Sarah's got the, uh, handbook on later in the agenda. I'll talk more about that when we get to that one. Uh, we are now going to have monthly staff meetings. They're the fourth Monday of every month. It'd be held at the library as soon as COVID allows us to. Until then, we'll be doing Zoom meetings for the staff. Those are at 3:30 every fourth Monday. Uh, Sarah, this one's for you. Uh, since we gave up our bank account and then we have no way to purchase online music, like from Amazon or other sites, and we needed to get some instructions how we can do that. We're in need of a, a new production computer in Trey's office and a new laptop, laptop for remotesy for the actual screen falls off the laptop. It's about half broken off by now. So we got, that's one thing we'll be asking for. Also, it's, uh, we were in a mess of trying to get a, 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 a nice shed and then things kind of fell apart because of the police station and, uh, this the cinema theaters and all that stuff that was going on at the time. And at the time Nick told us that not to give a shed because there's a good chance that the police station's moving and looking, and we might get a chance to move into the police station. They want to spend the money for the shed and all that, it's stuff. Well, obviously that's not happening right now and we are in dire need of room. I mean, right now you can't hardly walk around and you try to find an adapter. You gotta dump crates of stuff out on the floor and go through it. Finally, we have no room. So we're looking at getting a shed. The other one, um, I already talked about that one. Uh, we were talking last night at our staff meeting that once we get our new frequency and all that good stuff, we would like to have some kind of community involvement in a contest of some sort of something to, uh, uh, find us a new logo. You know, I mean, it's like a new football team getting a new uniform. Cause all the thing we have now won't be 91.3 anymore. It's gonna be whatever, 88.9 or whatever, or nine, whatever that frequency was. So, uh, that's one thing that we're looking at. I'm done.
Okay. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. We'll take those under advisement and, uh, uh, I'm sure you'll follow up more directly with Sarah on, on specifics.
Yeah.
Uh, quick technology, uh, report. Our profanity delay unit, um, uh, has been, uh, out, uh, for about a week. Um, I just received a message from the, uh, manufacturer where we sent it for repairs and, uh, it'll be on its way back shortly. And, uh, when I receive that, we'll get it reinstalled promptly so that we can, uh, have that little safety net of, uh, profanity delay in line. I, I, I'll just, uh, I'll just pass on any other comments right now under technology. There, of course, there are lots going on in the industry, but, uh, uh, not too much right now in the, uh, uh, radio broadcast side of, uh, of technology. So, uh, I'll pass on that. Uh, let's move on to our, uh, council liaison report. Uh, Frank, do you have, uh, any comments or, uh, guidance to share? Okay. Thank you. All right. City financial reports. Sarah.
Uh, so there's not much to report. The December financials were in your agenda packet. Uh, expenses for this biennium budget, which we all know is two years, 14, 579, 54. However, that does include those two line items that will happen every time until the new budget comes out where they turned you guys into a department. So they took from two lines and put it in a new line. Um, at this time, there is 51,778, 14 available for the radio station. And I did calculate the, I mean, your guys' revenues have been awesome too. So I think it's about like 7,000 or something like that since we, we started doing all this. So the revenue stream has been great, great job by everybody that's been working on it.
Yeah. Special tip of the hat to Roseanne. I know she knocked it out of the park and several of the, uh, on-air personalities likewise.
I, I have a question, Sarah. Uh, out of the 51, seven, how much is that is dedicated to the new license equipment that we gotta buy? Cause it was out, new allocation of funds for that.
I think that that and Marty, you probably have it off the tip of your tongue a little bit better, but I want to say that that was, was it 23,000?
Well, we had two stages. The 23,000 was for the, uh, lower power option or, or path. And there was about 54,000 for the 6,000 watt, uh, operation.
But the 54 did not get, didn't they say bring that back in the, we'll have to look at that.
Yeah.
Cause this doesn't include $54,000.
No, this includes the 24,000 or 23,000.
Yeah, I, I want to say that you gave those and they did the minimum, which was like 23,000 and then would review in the next bi- biennium budget. Um, but we can definitely look into that, but I know that this does not include an allocation of $54,000 that we did at the mid-biennium. So.
Okay. Well, fortunately it's, uh, um, there's a lot of variability involved because, you know, we're uncertain right now where this is gonna go. And, and if for some reason we, we fail to win, you know, it would all just, not all, but it would nearly all evaporate. So, um, uh, okay. Wonderful.
My question really was, is what's available for the radio station? Cause I want to make sure we take, I knew a lot of this wasn't hard money. It was for the, the new license and equipment and stuff.
Well, that still goes all, all of that goes into the same pot. So the radio station availability is 51, 774.
Yeah, but I don't want to touch any of that money that we're gonna need for the new equipment.
So this is just the general breakdown, like we said. So if we want to get into exactly down to the dollar without that money that was allocated for the licensing fee, I can get that back out in an email to you.
Yeah. Cause this looks really cool until you start taking all the money out.
It still looks good for, you know,
It does look good.
Only 11 months left of the budget. So you guys have done a great job.
Great. Excellent. Okay. Uh, thank you, Sarah. Um, old business license renewal app. Oh yes, I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead, Louis. Uh, unmute?
Yeah. So I just, I, I was gonna ask that question about how much money was allocated for the increase. But I was curious, is that an annual licensing fee or is that?
It's a one-time construction fee. That, that's the cost to build out.
And that, and that's for the licensing for that, for this, for the 6,000 watts?
Well, yes, correct.
Okay. Is that including your yearly sound exchange also and for online?
No.
Okay.
No, that's separate. Uh, that's something that's already baked into the, uh, uh, formula for the city's, uh, uh, costs, normal costs. So I, I know, and unfortunately, sound exchange just went up 500 bucks additional. So, yeah. But there are parties who are, there's a legislative movement to eliminate some of those costs for radio stations. Um, so, uh, there, there's a lot of, um, door knocking going on, uh, from the broadcast industry to see if they can get regulators to, uh, eliminate that, uh, and make radio a, a truly free medium, uh, for being able to broadcast, uh, the content.
Right. And then just the last question was that, um, uh, I don't know, I just, I, it just slipped. So.
I'm good. It'll come back around.
Thanks.
We'll chat with you again in a minute.
Right on.
Thank you. Okay. Um, license renewal application, item number six, under old business. I just checked on it. Uh, it has not been granted. Um, the FCC yesterday, uh, just granted, uh, I don't know, a couple of hundred stations, uh, in the West. Um, the FCC, uh, license renewal, this is for the existing license for KOSW. The processing, uh, at the FCC goes in stages by states. And right now they're processing Alaska, Washington, Oregon, Idaho and Montana, I believe. Um, so they're just starting, they just, uh, started announcing stations in Washington and Oregon. Uh, we were not on the list yet, but, um, I see no reason that we are going to run into any challenges, um, with, uh, uh, a clean license renewal for KOSW. Once, I'll be optimistic and say, once we get, uh, the full, uh, class A license and elevate ourselves above the low-power FM, uh, stature, um, uh, then we will, uh, turn in the license for KOSW. The commission won't allow a, uh, two ownerships of, uh, low-power FMs, uh, in the same community and to the same group. So, uh, we will, uh, abandon in essence, the, uh, KOSW 91 dot three, uh, in favor of the, uh, higher power coverage that we'll be receiving from, uh, an, a different frequency and covering the area. So, uh, uh, that's the status right now. Uh, it's still in processing. Uh, I expect it to be released reasonably soon. Um, item number seven, volunteer handbook. Um, are we ready to have a discussion on this? Uh, Rosanna and, uh, Daryl?
I can tell you that, um, so far I have marked up the, um, well, page is 14 through the end. Um, I went over it a couple of times and it's mainly right now for punctuation and grammar and all that. And I had questions on, um, some of the sentencing, but Butch had mentioned yesterday, this is a, a year-long project.
Well, we, we'll work on it this year. Yeah. We hope we don't take all.
Yeah.
A year doing it, but you know, we're meeting once a month. So the one thing, uh, Sarah, we're, we're, we're gonna drop the handbook thing. We're gonna make up policies and procedures. And I was wondering if you had some kind of a format that you guys do your policy procedures on, that we could transfer our handbook into, so we can attach it to our bylaws?
Good idea.
Well, I, I, I'll just insert real quick, um, that there's actually, uh, a requirement and it's in our, uh, volunteer handbook that, um, relates to, I'm trying to find it right now, that relates to the, oh, here it is. It's, uh, radio station rules under part A legal. Uh, item number four, it says the relevant policies and procedures adopted by the city of Ocean Shores apply to KOSW staff as well. So right there, that's our entree or entree to, uh, real, full reliance on the policies and procedures of the city of Ocean Shores as our guiding light through this. So I, I agree wholeheartedly that, uh, whether the, the name of the document changes to, uh, policies and procedures of KOSW or, uh, just reference those to the city. Uh, I think that is a, a, a real strong, uh, basis for this. So having inserted myself in that comment, uh, Sarah, did, I believe that was a question from Butch to you?
So I, I do. No, I do like what Marty's saying. I do think that it would, so I get that, like, you're bound by the same policy and procedures that the city is, but it would be interesting because there's so many more elements that go into, uh, the radio station itself that the policy and procedure basically be intertwined, not just referenced. So it would be, what I feel beneficial to take the city's policy procedure, have that as one document and start inserting these key components of KOSW into that, essentially creating your own policy and procedure that mimics the cities also, but it has all of your extra things in it, just so it's very clear. Because a lot of times, in my opinion, when you do those things by reference, the reference gets lost or people don't know where to look for the reference. And it'd just be easier if it was one solid document that you could just hand to your volunteers or have at your station and have for anybody to reference.
Yeah, we do need, we do need the city's policy.
Looks like it's frozen.
And, and we do have that. And I know as we have our new HR director too. And I know that that's in her purview is to update ours. Cause it just seems that every policy and procedure for every single entity is in need of a massive update. So we could definitely work on that and I can work with her to see if there's any like additions or subtractions and just create the radio station's one document in its entirety that can be referenced in your bylaws here in this.
Okay. Well, it might be advisable for us then to, um, get a copy of the policies and procedures and then we can figure out how we can meld what we've got or what needs to be changed into that, the way you've described. Um, so that would, that would be wonderful if we can, uh, get a breakout of that.
Well, my question will be though.
I think that'll help us all move forward.
And Sarah is, do you, after we get this, all our ideas and stuff written down here, do we want to give it back to the city for them to write it? So it's written correctly? Or do we want you trust us to write it?
Both.
I, I'm not gonna complain if you want to do a lot of the groundwork, but I would definitely review it and, and, and do things to it and then present it, but also giving our attorney the ability to review it, you know, as well as city administrator and the mayor. So.
We'll write and give it as a draft and you guys can do what you want with it after it's a draft, right?
That would be great. Cause I mean, ultimately the, the big picture of how the station runs really needs to come from you. And then all of the city aspects need to be put in by us. So that would be wonderful if you would be willing to do your edits on the city, on the KOSW side. And then we can do it. and then we can do it, and then present it back to you, see if there's any feelings that, you know, we don't like this, or we do like this, and then we can pass that on to the attorney just to do a review and, and be done with it.
Okay, so can we get it like a, a draft edited version of the policy procedure, so we can work with it? Okay.
Great. Perfect. Okay. We'll continue on with that. Daryl, any questions? I think Rosanna also, you opened up your mic for a moment. Did you have a question or comment?
No, everything sounds great. Again, what I had gone over is sentence structure and, you know, punctuation and everything, and and a few additions, so this is, you know, that, it's a lot. So, we'll take it one step at a time as we get all that information. It sounds great.
Excellent. Thank you. Daryl, anything? Okay. I'm seeing a no. All right, that's fine. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number eight, the Radio Board Member Applicants Interviews. We have received, I have to find my notes here. We have received three applications for filling in the open two positions on our radio board. And we've invited them here today, and I've, I've actually called each individual and left voice messages, or spoken with them personally, and we have at least two of the individuals present. So, let's see, we have Tom Gardner, Thomas Gardner. I, I have not heard back from him, and I don't believe he's present on the call at this time. We'll reach out to him one more time, because we will have our, our next meeting. But in the meantime, we have Louis Simmons, and we have Dave Bunch present on the call, and we have their applications in hand, but I know we did have a couple of questions that have been prepared. See if I can show that I'm prepared at all. See if I can find what I did with the questions. If not. I think I left them up where I originally started my call. Daryl, you have those original questions that you posed. I, I think I can find them on the.
I had them, but my cell phone battery just died, so I, I don't have the, I don't have access to them.
Okay. Okay. So, what I'd like to do is I'll just read a couple of these questions, and then I'd like to hear feedback from the applicants that are present. And as I said, what we'll do is we'll take your feedback now, and then we'll have our, our follow-up meeting on February first to hold a vote on the filling of positions on the radio board. So, let's start out. Louis, do you have any statement that you would like to make, and then I'll follow with the question?
Oh, yeah, I just, I'd like to just introduce myself to everybody and say, hi, my name's Louis Simmons, and currently, I'm on K O S W as a radio DJ. And yeah, it's been exciting and a lot of fun, and I see that we're able to connect with people all over the world, not just locally. And just, it's a great opportunity for so many different types of people, both for listening and for broadcasting. And so, I'm hoping to come on as a board member to help educate the community, specifically for emergencies, and doing my part to help engage the community with an online presence worldwide. And also learn about, you know, different licensing that, that you guys offer.
Okay, thank you for your introduction. So, I'll ask, let's see, we have four questions. I'll ask three questions, and then we'll move on to Dave and have his introduction and his questions posed. They'll be the same questions so that we can keep on the same page for everything. So, Louis, what's your previous experience in volunteering? Not only in radio, but other groups?
Well, for, for volunteering, this is really my first opportunity. I've been working full-time jobs up until I moved up here two years ago. My background is in music licensing with a company called Live Three Sixty-Five, which at the time provided online abilities for people, can, both consumers, hobbyists, and professionals to start their own internet radio station. There was a, you know, I would say a break in online internet broadcasting with low-powered FM. I would say, starting as far back as maybe two thousand and seven, with one of the original guys doing Radio Paradise. So, with that, I would just, you know, like to engage myself more with broadcasting, and this is, this is my first time live broadcasting from a station, from a studio. Most of my background has been from just online broadcasting.
Okay. Question number two is, well, I think you may have explained this. What was your previous radio experience, volunteer and professional? So, you, this is really your first on-air?
Right, just from, from, from working at Live Three Sixty-Five, basically, the, the story in a nutshell was, I started listening to Radio Paradise and thought, what a great opportunity it was for this, this guy to express his love for music to, to his followers. And so, from there, I had an interest of starting my own station, and then ended up doing that with Live Three Sixty-Five, and then actually got to move up there and work for them to see how people actually did format stations, how they were able to be creative and actually make a profit from this. So, it was, it was exciting. I wish to do more volunteer stuff. The reason why I'm doing it now is I had an accident when I first moved here, so I had a double spine surgery. So, so since that, I've been able to volunteer. Hopefully, we'll get back up on the horse and be able to work again. My background's aerial cinematography for motion picture and television.
Okay. Great. And then the third question is, why do you want to be on the radio board, and can you commit to the monthly meetings and other activities that are part of the activities that the board conducts?
Yes, I, I'd be able to, to fulfill that obligation for, for being on the board. I would really like to, again, connect our new residents, our new Ocean Shores, and, and local communities with our station, with our DJs, and with the local music. Just basically a way to connect with the community to actually find out what they wanna hear from their own radio station. You know, we're just, we're all volunteers here, and I know we all like to do what we do, and we're all good at it, but there's a community out there that I feel that is not fully tapped into yet, and with the, the the fast-growing population of Ocean Shores, you know, it's not like it was five, ten years ago with the radio station. And I'm looking forward for, for good changes for everybody, and, you know, first and foremost, for the emergency broadcast in case of an emergency, and you know, hoping to get on board with maybe some new projects, such as if our license, if our new license does allow it, maybe some type of pledge drive to increase our money options for the station.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, well, let's move on to Dave Bunch. Dave, are you ready and available?
Oh, yes.
Okay, well, please introduce yourself.
I am Dave Bunch. I, I currently am doing the Sunday two-hour show from ten to noon, and I try to do a show where I break up, have one hour where I play Pacificer Island, Islander music, or Hawaiian or Polynesian-type music for an hour, and then play just some easy-listening sixty, seventies, eighties-type rock stuff, and, and that is who I am. Been in Ocean Shores now for a couple of years, and still getting climatized, especially last week for that crazy rain that we had. I know we've had, my, my weather station says I've had already fifteen inches of rain this month, which I've lived in the Northwest all my life, but I've never quite seen the rain I've saw the last week, so. Anyway, that's enough about me for, for that question, I think.
Great. Well, well, thank you. Appreciate that, and I think everybody concurs that it's been extra soggy this year, and we're all big word, putting that in the rearview mirror. Okay, well, how about explaining what your previous experience in volunteering?
All right, my previous experience in volunteering with other groups is I volunteered a lot with a church that we attended in Vancouver area, and then later in the Portland, or actually, before that, in the Portland area, I've done a lot of different youth outreach programs and helped with the food distribution, and also worked as a sound engineer with the, you know, setting up different services and whatnot for, for musicians, and we, we had a system at the one huge place where they, you know, you mix the stage. Everybody had an ear monitor, so you, you mix them completely different from what, what the, what the crowd would be. So, I've done a, quite a bit of sound engineering work over the years, and then I also volunteered and was elected as the Recording Secretary for the Collins County Democrats, and did that for a couple of years. I installed some sound systems and video systems in the in the church-type thing that we, we were going to. They had no video, video monitors that were hooked up before. They, they were still using overhead projectors and things like that, so we, I tried to bring them up a little closer to the twentieth century and had made it interactive. And I think, other than that, that is, that is my volunteer experience. Before that, it was just all work-related, and I worked with labor unions for over twenty years, and was also very active in negotiating contracts, taking contract minutes and records. I sometimes was just the Recording Secretary for some of our construction negotiations, and other times was lead negotiator when it came to shipyards and shops and things like that. And, but that, that, once again, is not volunteer. That was all work-related, so. But I had a, quite a bit of experience working with human resource folks, as well as, as, as labor folks, and, and had you, you know, the, the, was lucky enough to get a lot of education for doing my job, so they sent me to a lot of different courses from everywhere, from the Harvard Trade Union Program, and at Harvard to the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and the way back when, the George Meany Labor Institute on the East Coast. Go ahead, I see a hand.
I apologize, but we've lost Daryl, so we'll need to just hold on until we can get back on.
Okay.
I apologize, Dave.
No, no, thank you. I'll, I'll contact Daryl right now.
Okay, Sarah, then can I ask you a question during this?
I prefer you wait till, till the board member comes back on.
Well, we live in an amazing technical age that we still rely on batteries that are capable of expiring, and that's what happened. Daryl is hunting for another battery for his device, and will be joining us very shortly. He was just grabbing it as I called, so he'll be back online in just a minute. Thank you for that observation, Sarah. So, if you'll keep standing by, Dave, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no worries. One good thing about retire, being a retiree, you get plenty of time on your hands.
Well, thank you for your patience, and we'll see what happens here in just a minute. It's probably driving Daryl crazy that he's unable to instantly join back in. I think I know that well enough about him. Hey, there we go. Welcome back there. Well, you're not quite there. Okay, welcome back, Daryl. Can you check your mic? Make sure you're good? Oh, there we go.
Okay, sorry.
No, no problem. It, it, it happens to all of us. It's a technological marvel that we're here in the first place together, so. Okay. Let's go back to Dave.
Yeah, I think I pretty much finished on that. I don't know, I think, I don't know where Daryl cut out at, if you missed anything or not.
Sorry, Dave.
Okay. So, that was relative to previous radio, yeah, question two on previous experience.
So that was, that was number one with the
Oh, you were extended down into two then by answering a couple of the questions because the question two was, what's your previous radio experience, both volunteer and professional? And if you want to rephrase or take just a minute to re-describe your previous radio experience for volunteer professional, that'd be okay too.
Sure, yeah, no, I, that I tried to, I don't, anyway. Yeah, so the other sound work I did, like I said, that wasn't necessarily with radio or anything. I was mainly audio visual and sound in, you know, for large groups of people and things like that. So it was not a radio. And I tried to keep that strictly to the volunteer side, except I did delve a little bit into my background history on the on the recording secretary and things like that. As far as radio experience, my radio experience would be most likely limited to, I have, I hold it, I hold an extra license with the FCC and have for a number of years, which is ham radio. An extra license is the highest level you can achieve in ham radio. And have, you know, broadcast and whatnot over I don't know, several different continents and countries. It's amazing what you can do with a with a ham radio and low power. And I've been lucky enough to experience a lot of that. I also did volunteer with the Collins County Department of Emergency Management. And in that, in Collins County, we had a very active volunteer radio group where we had actually a truck with the lights on it and looked like a county sheriff truck. And anytime the county did any kind of a exercise with, where they were exercising for a live fire incident on a college campus or something like that, we would always be there and coordinate their communications. Our truck had a radio in it that had direct access to the FBI, the sheriff, the local police and various other agencies. And then, let's see, there was one other radio thing, but I have gone blank, I think. I just can't think. Yeah, I had, I had one other radio thing besides the Department of Emergency Management, but yeah, we used to do, like, one of the local radio things we did on ham was, because Mount St. Helens was in the radio, we would do a worldwide type thing and say, where were you when Mount St. Helens blew on May 18th every year? And we got a lot of input from that, but I cannot recall the other radio piece. If I do, I'll certainly mention it.
Okay, well, thank you. All right. Question number three is, why do you want to be on the KOSW radio board? And are you able to commit to monthly meetings and other activities?
Yes, I'm definitely able to commit to any activities because I am retired and I don't, I'm not real active doing, doing a lot here, especially in the current lockdown situation. We take most of that serious still, so we don't, we don't do a whole lot. So, yeah, I'm available anytime. And one of the reasons I'd like to be on the board is I just find that I'm still amazed living here that how many people don't know in some cases about the radio and/or even other things in the local community. So I like, I have a neighbor and I live close to Oihut. And I have a neighbor that didn't realize Oihut up here has a grocery store and a little restaurant and and they'd never listened to KOSW before. And so I got them to listen. And then I had a caller call in a while back on the radio station was saying how much her friend liked listening KOSW, but her friend's out of town. And she had no idea that, because she was calling to comment about the Hawaiian music. And, and I, so I told her, well, your friend can listen just online. And, you know, so obviously she was a listener, but for whatever reason, it never made it through to her that you can listen online. So I, a couple of times I went out of my way to say, you know, on koswradio.com, you can just go to that button and push it on the page and listen to the radio no matter where you're at. So anyway, that's been kind of fun, but I think that there's a lot of room for more exposure and and obviously, some of that might come through more signage and when we expand the signal and range, then I'm thinking that's, that's going to be a a big awareness campaign to go out to, you know, up and down the coast here. And I think that's, that's about it.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. And I think we'll call that a wrap on the questions. Butch, you have a question?
I have a question related to this. Am I allowed to ask a question? Not to, I don't want to ask them. I'm going to ask Sarah, right then.
Oh, okay. Feel free to ask Sarah.
All three of the nominees are all got volunteer apps in at the radio station. One's already, Dave's already doing a show, so is Lily, but Thomas hasn't yet. My question is, if all five members of the radio board are volunteers at the radio station, what does that do to my staff meetings?
Oh.
Yeah, there's the potential for a quorum. I mean, you would really have to, because that would, hold on. Sorry, we were getting a delivery. That would, you would just have to be careful because that would be radio board business ultimately, because you guys are going to do the reviewing and the discussing. So we would have to not ever have a quorum. I mean, meaning all of them wouldn't be able to be there at one time or a quorum of them wouldn't be able, because ultimately the radio board's going to review and vote and input and all of that into like your volunteer packet, various business. So we would just have to be very conscientious about that.
We realize we don't have that many volunteers. You take three of them out of the mix. That's, that's a good percentage of my staff.
That'll be something that the radio board will have to consider with, with your input.
I just wanted to throw that out there so everybody understood what I was talking about. We ran into that last night at the other board meeting. Fortunately, Daryl was out of town, so we were able to get Marty and Roseanne on. But if Daryl was in there and counting on the deal, we would have had to cut somebody off.
Right. Well, it's, it's a challenge in the way that, you know, the requirements put us in place. Frank has his hand up. One second, Butch, Frank, would you go ahead and pose your question or comment?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. He went to the staff meeting and kept quiet and didn't participate in it, but just observed. Would that be an issue?
I'm gonna guess that participation is
Something I just, it's not a, it's not, Frank's on to something there. It's, it's a I don't know, then why would you go? Just to listen?
Just to listen.
I feel, I personally feel like it's a very slippery slope because the minute you forget yourself and interject, you have now put the whole board in a, in an issue.
Can I, can I, I can mute them though, right? As host? So they can't
Yep.
Yeah, I, we may need a little bit more fine tuning on the clarification on that because from my perspective, attendance is participation, regardless of the, I mean, you can listen to it later. That's not participating in the meeting, but being present in the meeting is probably gonna if it doesn't throw up a big flag, it's going to start to pop up above the noise floor. So I don't know, abundance of caution is my take on this, but I will certainly defer if, Sarah, if you have an opportunity to get some clarification. We'll see what we can do. I see a hand up from Dave. Would you care to enter in?
Thank you. Yeah, my only comment was earlier, Sarah had mentioned that to have a meet, or maybe it was you, Marty, you mentioned that to have a meeting like the one you planned to have next week, it has to be scheduled 48 hours in advance. So I would think that wherever there was a quorum of people that are on any board, whether it's going out to lunch or, or you know, having an interaction somewhere else in public, I don't know how that would could be considered a, you know, any real function of the board, but I'll leave that to all of you.
Yeah, those are questions that have crossed my mind the last couple of days too. Frank, did you have a fill-in comment?
My, because we've had a quorum at the mayor's conversation. We're just sitting there listening. They weren't participating. My understanding is that council, which I assume would be the same as the board, does not discuss the radio items for discussion and they don't take action that they can be anywhere as a group. That was my understanding. And Sarah can clarify that. But reading the MRSD, I mean, you can get together as a group, but you can't discuss business or take action.
Well, again, that may just be the matter of abundance of caution. So Sarah, would you have the ability to ask a question upstream as far for some guidance?
Well, there's not a question. What Frank is saying is factual. If you do not discuss or take action. And again, I would, I would argue that I find it hard to believe that if the entire radio board got together that in some manner, the radio board or the radio board or the the radio station's operations or functionality or something that could come down the pike later on in discussion or action item wouldn't be discussed. So that, that's my take on it.
Okay.
We, you know, we do what we do and then I roll the dice. I, I can't. It's an argument I've had a thousand times. I
Okay. Well, okay, so that's good news. So again, if we just apply a prudent amount of control, we'll be fine. Butch, go ahead. You have a quick question.
Staff meetings are all radio business. We're not talking about the weather or going down the beach. It's always talking radio business when we, so yeah, it would be a quorum of of radio board that would be there.
Well, I guess it depends if the radio board is taking any action based on that.
Or having
It's, yeah.
Well, we take action as a group, not as a radio board. I mean, but you, there's still action being taken. We're going to be just assessing policy and procedures are going to be stuck, talking all kinds of different things in our staff meetings. So I'll probably have to be the bad boy here to tell which ones, which two can come and which three can't, right? And then try to fill them in later.
That works. That works. You could invite it specific individuals on a rotating basis.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we'll figure out the mechanics of it.
Or you could change your quorum rules to four instead of three.
Yeah. Yeah, that, but we can do that. It could be done. We'll take that under advisement as an opportunity to make a change if we feel like that's appropriate. But yeah, that's, that is a possibility. I'm not, I have to think about ripple effects. So we'll, or we all do have to think about ripple effects, but so we'll investigate that. Yes, Daryl, one more point on this.
Well, yeah, one more point is I think if we had a Zoom meeting so that some of these laws, these rules were put together before you had the ability to do virtual type meetings, I think if you were to mute, let's just say all of the radio board members, they're all muted and their video is not allowed. So you don't get any non-verbal communication coming up. We're like, hello. And so you can't see them, you can't hear them, but they could listen in. It seems to me that would be, that would be acceptable because they can't participate. But they're getting the information that's being presented.
Yeah, and I that, that actually holds a lot of merit. That's a very good approach. I think one other aspect, unfortunately, that we'd have to make sure was under the control of the moderator of the of the Zoom meeting is the messaging aspect where the, I can't remember the term chat during, during the, we'd have to keep that turned off at least for the board members. So, but that's just a matter of respecting the system and not doing that too. Louis, you had one more?
Yeah, if they, if they're not going to be able to talk or if we're not going to be able to see them, why just not post it the next day or the next hour after your guys are finished?
Well, yeah, it does give us an opportunity to, you know, if we're available, certainly if we're not available, you'll never know whether or not we listen to it the next day. So you know, the only cue that any of us would be present would be our names appearing on the screen only. So I don't know, we'll cross that bridge, do a little more research and figure out how we're gonna manage that aspect of it, Butch. But that, that's an appreciated valued question because it is a potential challenge. So okay. Any new business for the radio board? Hearing none. And there's no real discussion. Our next meeting, it will be scheduled for February 1st, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. And with that, I'd love to hear a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Rosanna. A second?
My second.
Daryl, excellent and fast vote. Marty, aye? Daryl?
Aye.
Roseanne?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for your participation today. It's been a long one, but thank you, thank you. And we'll regroup in a week.